I am. All right. Good morning. I am going to call the meeting to order. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, so our item number three is follow-up from the 224 budget hearing, second budget hearing, and we have the Police Department up with some follow-up that was requested during that hearing. You want to just bring these two chairs and come here? Very good. Thank you.
Madam first, Select Woman. In the course of the -- can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. In the course of this follow-up, if we have outstanding questions for -- that may not have been questions on the day last week, can we call people up, like for instance, if there are outstanding Board of Ed questions or --
Sure. I mean, sure, if they're here, I mean, obviously.
Yeah.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just -- do you have what you -- the follow-up is? Or did you want to re -- it was a lot -- some of this stuff was from you, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
You want to start?
One of the things was ECC.
Okay, very good.
Questions about the 23 ECC budget.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Jerry. We sent a follow-up document, and so basically what we -- what I did was I took the -- broke the 23 budget into two pieces. We looked at the actuals of what's happened, so we did a two-thirds actual budget, and then in that document, there's the last third, which we're doing a projection on because that's really, right now, the -- well, it's more known now, and that'll be when the -- when Westport comes on. And so they could -- I think the crux of the question was about the revenue loss related to this year's ECC budget, and in the document, you would see that in the difference in other revenue sources as a result of, number one, New Canaan coming on later, Easton not coming on, not projected to come on this fiscal year, and then some reductions in the state grant. So the revenue loss related to those was $322,000. And then in addition to that, because Westport is coming on later, although there is going to be some, I'll call them minor charges to them for the first two-thirds of the year, their revenue loss would be about $524,000 in the current year. In addition, Fairfield, the Fairfield General Fund budget contribution would be down by $259,000, which the Fairfield contribution, the general fund, means that there's that amount of surplus in the general fund related to ECC, because there's a single-line appropriation. We don't need, given that the expenditures aren't as high as they were budgeted, we don't need to transfer that whole amount or appropriate that full amount. And that's consistent with the range that Caitlin gave when she was doing the quarterly budget last week. She gave a range of, I believe it was $200,000 to $400,000, and we're -- now we're projecting $259,000. That would be savings to the general fund budget and consequently a loss in revenue to the ECC budget.
So that implies, Jared, if I get that correctly, that --
Was. That implies, if I'm following correctly, about a $1.1 million savings in expense on the ECC for the year? Correct. Yep, exactly.
And that's based mostly on staffing?
Yes.
Why would -- I'm curious, why would Fairfield's contribution from the general fund go down if the others did not move in and contribute? That implies, by definition, that Fairfield was picking up some of the burden for having the other towns in there.
So the, you know, the balance of it is that if the spending is going down by $1.1 million, then the revenue would, you know, to maintain balance, would go down by about the same amount, and that's what the -- those sources that I mentioned, the other sources being 322, New Canaan, Easton State Grant, and then Westport for 524, and Fairfield at $259,000.
Yeah, no, I understand the math, and I understand the revenue side of it would -- But I don't understand is the expense side. Because I -- and I'm making an assumption here, and this is what I want to understand. Basically, the vast majority of our expenses down in the ECC are down because those other municipalities did not come in for the fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
So we didn't need to staff them, right? If the incremental expense of having those municipalities tied to the incremental revenue, the impact on Fairfield would be zero. The fact that revenue required from the general fund, because expenses are down so much, implies that in a normal fiscal year, Fairfield would be subsidizing the emergency operations of the other three towns to the tune of $254,000. Otherwise, if it was apples to apples, you wouldn't have the 850 coming in, and you wouldn't have the 850 going out as expense, particularly with the state grant going away. It really does imply that Fairfield is carrying a higher burden than they should be by having those other towns in there. That's just the math. That's just how it works.
And Fairfield is carrying a higher burden. We, you know, we pay two-thirds of the budget.
Okay. I know we pay two-thirds, but is -- are we paying incremental expense by having those other towns in there? Because basically what we're saying is, we're saving money by -- we're saving $250,000 by not having those other towns in there, and we lost the state grant revenue to 350, and we're still paying 250 less. Don't let them in, and it's to the benefit of the Fairfield taxpayer.
Okay, I'm going to let Frank.
So I think there's a couple of things to consider. The first thing would be that the ECC fund is accounting for certain benefits, like health, self-insurance, property liability insurance, and other things like that, that in prior years, the general -- it would have been contained in another part of the general fund, either active employee benefits or retiree benefits. So I think the initial question that you had is, you know, well, how could expenditures -- how could the transfer-in go down if the other towns aren't kind of covering their share? If I look at the ECC budget, and I kind of look at it as, you know, if the other towns aren't in the ECC or hadn't moved in at a certain point, then I would look at it as we were just covering the expenses that we otherwise would have been under a normal scenario. So in the general fund, the ECC budget was about $1.3 million, and like I said, that doesn't account for some of those other items. So in the FY '23 budget, the ECC had a budgeted revenue line from transfers and from the town of Fairfield of 1.7 million. So if we were just continuing our operations and just covering our side, then that's how we would contribute less, because much of the expense is on the staffing side from the town of Westport. So it is conceivable to me that our transfer-in would come down if the other towns hadn't moved in and if they weren't paying their revenue.
I did not follow that. That was an accounting explanation, not a real business explanation. If the explanation is, we incurred less cost than we thought in the original budget unrelated to the other towns, I'd be fine. I'd understand that. But we're not saying that we have $1.1 million in less expense for any other reason than the towns not moving in. You know, that was a -- that was an accounting explanation. I'm not diminishing that, Frank. I'm just saying it's -- that's debits and credits. What I'm looking at is literally, we're saying the other towns didn't move in, and our expenses are down by $1.1 million, and our revenue from them is only down 850, which implies that Fairfield is incurring more cost by having them in there, which was never the goal, right? And by the way, I'm just going by the numbers. I'm not saying I'm right. I'm saying just analytically, that's what it tells me.
So the -- I don't know if this helps you at all or not, but the Fairfield number and Fairfield's contribution is the last component of this. We kind of back our way into what Fairfield pays, what gets appropriated from the general fund budget of the town.
Right.
And so you have all these other things going on in the budget that are all kind of interconnected between New Canaan, Easton, the state grant, Westport, and in the meantime, the Fairfield appropriation is fixed. So it's a, you know, proportionately, it's a bigger portion of the budget until we get to the point of reconciling these things and, you know, figuring out how much Westport is putting in and how much we're going to actually get from the other sources to determine what and back our way into what Fairfield would need to contribute.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Because I know exactly what you're saying on that. And by the way, that makes sense, but here's my question on that. Does that -- because what that implies to me is this. We fix everything at the beginning of the year. We go through the year, we calculate, we calculate, we calculate, we run the operations. At the end of the year, we say, here's the number. And by the way, Westport, Easton, New Canaan, whoever else comes in, you owe us incrementally more, because our expenses were incrementally more. Do we have that opportunity, or do we not get to bill them? And my suspicion is, we don't get to bill them additional because they have a set budget like we do.
We bill them in arrears, and it's done quarterly. So we have the opportunity to --
But we've told them what -- yeah, but we've told them what we're going to bill them, right?
Right, right. We've given them a budget for what they're going to -- what they should pay us, just like, you know, we would have a budget, and that could change throughout the year.
But what this implies is that if we went through this year, right, and using my math, our scenario here, right, we had to pay this 1.1 because they were here, you would do the math and say, well, wait a minute, right? I mean, you owe us 250 more, and Fairfield gets the benefit, it goes down. Can we do that?
So let me touch on that, because I had this discussion with several of the board members, and the question was like, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, right? Does Fairfield establish their budget, and then we get approved by the FCRD Control Board? Or does the Control Board approve the budget, and then we go -- my concern with that was that if we go then before the town boards, and they say, well, we're not going to approve that number, now we have to go back, and maybe Westport had already had theirs approved in --
That'd be my concern, too.
Right. So in going back, looking through the inter-local agreement, it describes that the FCRD Control Board is to establish a budget
Yep.
And to some extent, get it approved by the Control Board, and the town bodies are almost subject to the costs of the -- that budget. So that, maybe Fairfield perhaps couldn't change the numbers or do things later on in their favor, or Westport for the same reason.
But how does that work, right? In other words, and are we prepared to go back? See, my concern here is, we established a budget and said Fairfield's going to pay $250,000 more than it is. And, you know, we're going to look at it and say, oh, okay, we're within budget. The reality is, we're picking up more money, more expense than we should, to the benefits of the other town, unless we have the discipline and the ability to go back to the other towns and bill them for the incremental cost. Because this most certainly, unless I'm missing something, this most certainly implies that Fairfield is taking a higher percentage of the cost than they should, given -- and tell me if I'm wrong, the assumption here I'm making, right, is that the only reason we're $1.1 million less than we thought we were going to be in expense here is because those other towns aren't in the ECC, right? There could be other reasons we're below, but I'm just saying, for purposes of this discussion, it would appear we're low, and the only big change has been that those other towns aren't here, which implies that we're picking up a portion of their expense. And by "their," I mean the Fairfield taxpayers picking it up.
So if I could just answer that to give you more of the business explanation, I guess?
Thanks.
So in prior years, like I said, just look at the general fund, and I look at, you know, around average expenditures for the ECC, which would be just for the town. We were about 1.4 million in actual.
Right.
If I look at year-to-day actuals plus encumbrances, which really just accounts for the town's operation of the ECC, right?
Yeah.
Because Westport hasn't moved in yet. We're at actuals plus encumbrances, we're at about 1.4 million. If I account for ECC contracts, like, and those insurance contracts, I'd say we'd probably end up, just for the town side, ending up at 1.6. So, I mean, just on the expense side, that's where I wouldn't classify it that the other towns are -- like, we're picking up the expenses of other towns, because we are where we would be if we had run the ECC by ourselves.
But that's apples and oranges, because one of the --
And apples and oranges, anyway.
One of the reasons to go into the ECC was to save money. So what you just explained is the reason why Fairfield gave back some of its savings, right? It's not the reason to say, well, we've got to compare it to, to do apples to apples, is what was the original budget versus what we're -- forget what the past was, because the past no longer exists. It's what did we expect, what are we paying out? And I understand what you're saying, and it's a good year over year, but it's a different -- you changed the business model, so the economics have changed, so when you analyze it, you've got to analyze versus the expected --
I need a clarifying question.
Can I just respond to that?
Well, I'm lost on the conversation, but I'm lost.
All right, just let him finish this part, and then I'll -- let me manage the meeting.
I'm sorry, just because I don't want to forget it.
Yeah, yeah, that's --
So I see the point that you're making, right? So the point you're making is that we ran the ECC at 1.4, we should have savings of like $300,000, let's say.
Maybe.
So the real expense right now should be 1.1.
Right.
My response to that would be, we're not -- in prior years, we were about 1.3, 1.4. We also included, like I said, health insurance expenses that the general fund picked up. We also incurred all these other insurances, and the ECC retroactively got an increase for, I think, about three or four years of contractual payments that were included in this budget. So, you know, say we, you know, if I'm saying that, yeah, we're running at about just where we were in expenses for prior years, but a lot of the expenses in this fund increase, then I would say that there are savings in there, because with all the insurance numbers, with additional contracts, we're still running at the level we were running at, and I think that we would continue to --
Yeah, I'll follow up, but I want to give --
That's a good explanation. So I just want to just jump in for a minute. So obviously, this has been the -- this is the first regional emergency communication center in the state, so it's new. And my understanding about this, and obviously, this partnership began before my administration took over, but my understanding was several components were included in this. But my belief was, the most important part of this was increasing response time. Like, that was the number-one reason to do it. Savings were part of it, but the number-one reason was to respond faster to emergencies, to save people's lives. And so that's always was my understanding of why we would do this, and also to be sort of a trendsetter for the rest of the state to do things like that as well. So I just wanted to jump in and say that, and I'll open it up. Nancy, you had some additional questions?
Yeah, just a clarifying question. I was going to make that very same point about, it's not a simple math equation, but it feels like the calculus in this case is overcomplicated, and I just wanted to make sure I wasn't getting confused, because it seems to me that when you have more people, more towns, it will be less expense to Fairfield, because you have more people in the pot adding to it. So therefore, the reverse would be also true. When there are less people, it's going to cost us more. Isn't that sort of like the very basic math of it, or is that not what you were getting at?
Well, yeah. None of what either of you two had said is wrong, right? And I certainly am not questioning the wisdom of doing the ECC on a regional basis, right? I'm just drawing a conclusion based on the facts that's presented on the finances, that if we thought we were going to pay X amount with having all these towns in there, and we're actually, don't have those towns, don't have that revenue, and we're paying less, the natural implication is that Fairfield was subsidizing, the Fairfield taxpayer was subsidizing more of the other towns, which, oh, by the way, wouldn't necessarily be completely shocking to me in the first year of operations, because everything's an estimate anyway. But as you move forward, you need to make sure that the calculation is done so that everybody's just paying their fair share.
I see.
Right? That's my point. It's the incremental expense, and if you're saying the incremental expense is going down without them, more than you thought, it means that Fairfield taxpayers are paying more than they should, not even more than prior year, just more than they should, given the percentages.
And then I would follow that up with, because you mentioned early on, if we had the capacity or wherewithal to bill back, wouldn't that be something in the first year we'd have to sort of look at and then understand how that works and by what metric, et cetera? So to me, some of that is the growing pain of the first year.
Yes. But part of that is actually not looking at it as relates to the budget and saying, hey, we're under budget, we're good, right? But looking at it and saying, we're under budget, but why are we under budget, and how did we achieve it, which it would appear to be, and nobody's telling me any differently, that the other towns weren't there, right? So you've got to go to the next level. I get concerned of the fact that we'll just stop at the fact and say, we're under budget, we're good, right? That's not necessarily the case. That's my point.
One added point I do have to make is that when the mergers are actually, when other PSAPs are closed and the mergers are completed, we are afforded additional grant funding that comes to us. So that is additional revenue on our side that we would be receiving on top of that.
Which is great.
Right. And, you know, you and Frank are sitting there saying, well, it's going to cost us almost the same thing, you know, whether we merged or we didn't, or, you know, if we kept it in the basement of the Fairfield Police Department. We're going to be afforded additional grant funding at the time these municipalities join in.
Yeah, and let me be very clear. That's why I kind of said it's apples and oranges. I don't want to compare to prior year. This is a different business model. You have to compare it to the business model.
Understood.
And I'm just going that next level and saying, that business model implies that we're picking up more of the tab than we need. That's it. That's the point. And we need to now go back and look at it, and that could be a tough conversation with your other tenants.
Well, I can say that Westport has been very, very collaborative on our, you know, they understand, similar to us, that, you know, this is new, it requires some, you know, negotiation on everything, and they've been very good to have those conversations with, in all aspects, from the human resources component to the financial component, and we haven't had any issues thus far, so.
Should probably talk to them before the Board of Finance votes on this. There's not enough time for today and all that. And I'm not trying to be hypercritical, but I think there's an opportunity here, and I just want to make sure the Fairfield taxpayer is picking up their fair share and no more.
If I could just take that back, we have a Control Board meeting tomorrow. We started to discuss before what comes first, the Control Board approving the budget, and then going to the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen approving. We have a Control Board meeting tomorrow. I've already gotten verbal commitments from the stakeholders, and we have a special meeting tomorrow to accomplish just that voting specifically on it.
Chief, could you go into, because I know Nancy and Tom are not as familiar as I am, as the administration is, of all the effort, and what is the Control Board? Can you give a little flavor to the board?
Sure.
So they can understand it.
The Control Board consists of the four chiefs, Fairfield Police, Westport Police, Fairfield Fire, and Westport Fire Department. And essentially, when there are decisions that need to be made, whether it be expenditures from the budget, operations, any type of operational discussion, those items would be brought before the Control Board to make the decisions on how we are going to operate the center.
Are there any questions on that?
No, we had gone through that when it was all set up, and it sounds like a very reasonable management.
Right, so it's just, you know, just to kind of also give additional information to the board, I mean, it's been really a lot of work. There was some changes in the way this was structured originally, who was in charge, it had to be sort of reorganized. There was a tremendous amount. This is, again, the first of its kind in the entire state, so there was a lot, to Frank's point, a lot of different and long conversations that were, had to be had regarding different unions coming together, who's paying what, are they the same? And it was a lot of, a lot of work.
If I could just add one thing to that, the Control Board is a partnership, and any new members that come into, or let me clarify that, municipalities that come into the center would then be, to some extent, clients. So they don't become part of the Control Board to make the decisions. The Control Board will remain as it stands, and anybody coming in new would be clients.
Thanks, Chief. Go ahead, Nancy.
You just answered one of my questions, which was that, but also sort of pulling back a little bit away from the budget, I just wanted to make the point that you and I had an email exchange, and there was something in the paper about the union, and that you were very quick and firm and fair to say that you are ready completely, and I just would love to hear you say that publicly, because it was really reassuring.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, you know, there's, any time that there's change, there's going to be a little bit of anxiety and, you know, questions as to whether operations will run smoothly, whether things, you know, emergency situations could go awry, and I think that we have a pretty good plan in place to mitigate anything that could happen. We have staff in the, staff not only in the emergency communication center, but we have stakeholders from all partnering members in the center around the clock to ensure that if there are any questions or concerns in the center for an incoming call, that they would be handled and mitigated immediately.
Thank you.
And I just want to, I want to maybe provide some assurance going forward. If, you know, if this year, the town is picking up more, it's just, it's because of the formula, and it's because of the inter-local agreement and how we bill, and when Westport would be coming in. So for example, if you, you know, we run the numbers for the, what I'm getting at is the last third is really more indicative of what the agreement as a whole looks like. And so if there is a, if there ends up being, if it ends up being that Fairfield pays a little bit more this year, it doesn't mean that that's going to be the way it is in the future, because in the future, we're not going to, we're going to have Westport in there for the entire year, we're going to have New Canaan's full payment, we're going to have the whole state grant, which, at least according to our past projections, would save us money compared to the old model and the old ECC. It will save us money.
I don't, let me be clear. I don't care about it compared to the old model. I can compare about the economics of the new model, right? And what I care about is making sure that under the new model, which is a different business model for us, right? And it adds additional stress. I'm not harping on you guys, I'm not picking on anybody, right? Yet, it has to go to the next level of analysis to say, is Fairfield picking up its share and only its share? And reporting back to the Control Board and saying, you owe us more money. The prior model is irrelevant, right? It's about the new model and making sure that the Fairfield taxpayer is only paying the amount that it should have.
Right.
That's all.
And what I'm saying is that next year, when there's a full year of Westport being in, it will be that way. It will be the way it was laid out in the inter-local agreement.
The only way that happens is if that analysis takes place. My concern is, don't stop and say, well, we're below budget, we're good. No, because it's got -- No, because it's got to be what that percentage of the budget should be going back. That's my point. There's more work to be done on that.
Understood, but we never, we haven't had actuals yet.
Agreed.
And that is the, that's the bottom line. There's no actuals to say, so what we're doing is we're trying to come up with some number that says, hey, for three months, we're going to be in there with Westport, and try to make assumptions based on that short period of time.
Yeah, no, I get it. I just want to make sure that continues.
And to your point, I could, we're going to make sure that that continues.
Right. No, thank you. Good discussion. Thanks for the analysis. Thanks for the work.
Okay, are there any additional?
Oh, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Not ECC related, but police department related.
Oh, sure.
I'm just looking at some of the backup, and two things I wanted to mention, though, in terms of the conversation we had last week, in part because people said they couldn't hear me, which was my fault. If you could comment on, someone had asked about if the uptick in some of the calls and whatnot was university-related. We had talked about that offline, so if you could just talk about that. But also just wanted to state for the record that I had asked you the question about sufficient staff and no one wanting police work to get, to be, to have paperwork interfere with the work of doing policing to keep everybody safe. And you had been reassuring on that front, that you felt this budget was reflective of your ability to keep that going, and that paperwork wouldn't necessarily be a hindrance on that. So I'd love you to just sort of comment on those two things.
Sure.
Thank you.
So the impact from both Sacred Heart and Fairfield University, as I, you know, sent to you in the report that we submitted, was not very significant. In fiscal year 21, we were continuing to log COVID exposures, so that the call volume in fiscal year 21 was significantly higher than others. In FY '22 and '23, they were nothing remarkable, you know, a typical call volume for a population of, excuse me, you know, 5,000 or 4,500 for Fairfield U and probably close to that same number for Sacred Heart University. It's comparable for that population and given the demographics of that population, if you will. And we also had, you know, carved out that section of the beach area that would oftentimes give us some call volume as well. You know, it's, I wouldn't say there's any increase there. It's comparable to what we get on a regular basis. And your second question was?
Just being reassured that the staff?
Yeah.
Being reassured that the staff you have is sufficient to do the work of policing rather than the work of paperwork?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, like I said, the, the, I guess you could say the societal requests for things that we do, the community outreach, the things that don't really have a policing aspect to it, it is a policing aspect. We get called for everything. And I think those are the, those are the things that take up more time, take up more sensitivity, and just require more, you know, an increased presence, I guess you could say, from the individual officers that are handling a call or a group of officers that are investigating a sensitive matter.
And the point I was making is just to make sure that you felt assured that you had the staff to handle all of those things, given, and you had, yes, in fact, said that you did, so I just wanted to sort of say that for the record. And then we also just got this backup, and I'm curious if it's worth mentioning, the outside jobs fund, is there anything you want to add to this other than just that it's here and part of the record?
The only thing I'll add is that, you know, we do get a lot of jobs, some of which go unfilled. Our officers do their best to, you know, fulfill the obligations of safety within our town. Our supervisors ensure that the jobs that do end up going unfilled are the jobs that are, you know, you know, we're moving people around to make sure that the busiest jobs are the busiest locations or where we're covering, so that incorporates the highest safety to the town.
Thank you. I don't have anything further.
I can add to that, because I know Tom had questions about the outside jobs fund, including the legality of it. So what we did with this to provide some assurance to the town boards was, Anthony's sitting here, similar to the, you know, we use the, yeah, Anthony's revolving rec fund as kind of a model, and then we tweaked it a little bit, but we did send to you the policy that we would put in place so that you know money's being, that there are limitations on how the money can be spent, and we're providing you the reporting so that you can see on a regular basis that we're actually doing what we propose, what we're proposing in the policy. And so we used that as a, used Anthony's fund as a model, and then kind of made some changes to it based on the particulars of this operation.
Thank you. Is that a proposed policy that hasn't been approved yet?
It has not been approved yet.
Yeah, because that, just that the revolving fund that got, this predates me, was approved by the Board of Finance. So I would say you have to get that policy approved by the Board of Finance as you move forward.
Right. Yes, agreed.
A couple quick more questions, if I might.
Yes.
First of all, on the ECC, one of the comments I had, going back to it just for a second, there was the captain position in there, and I had asked a question, is had that been approved by the control board?
I, the answer to that is not yet, but I have verbal commitments from the membership that we are, we are going to discuss that tomorrow. And as I said, I have verbal commitments at this point.
So are you going to vote on that tomorrow, Chief?
We are.
Okay, so that's, again, I think there's two follow-up items for the Board of Finance related to the ECC, get their arms around this costing-revenue thing, and then the captain here. I don't want to hold it up, but we've got to be cognizant of the fact that the control board needs to approve that. And again, this is part of moving forward at that. The other issue we had, or questions that I had, was I didn't understand the overtime within the department, and I think the answer at the time was that the overtime had been calculated largely by taking a three-year average, which really didn't take into account the staffing changes that were coming up in the current fiscal year, assuming that gets approved.
Okay, this is Keith Broderick. I dove in a little deeper, and I think you had valid arguments on your side with more staffing, it should go down. So I looked, I actually looked all the way back to 2017. The short answer is, in the budget, you're showing a 17% increase. But in actuality, it's going to be a probably 10% decrease over FY '24, because the first three you're seeing are actuals, and FY '23 is a budgeted number, and we're...
What page are we on? Can you bring me back to that page so I can? Thank you.
I have a snippet, was it 136 or something like that? I have a snippet of it, so I don't have...
132.
133. So I looked at all three overtime lines like you asked, and I can give it first. 51050 first, overtime earnings.
Yep.
So FY '24, so the first three numbers you're seeing are actuals.
Yep.
1.024, then 1235, then 1433. And FY '23 of 1108 is only a budgeted number. We're already $200,000 over our half-year actual, so we're projected this year to be $400,000 over. So that number most likely, in next year's budget book, is going to be 1.5. So if I'm asking for 1.29, it's actually a reduction of $200,000, and that's not taking into account the 5.5% contractual raises.
So let me ask a question. In the prior years, where did you take the money from? Because your budget remained appropriate with what was approved, right?
I believe so, yeah.
So where, so it's...
Where did overages go?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I look back, that's maybe better off for finance, it was before my time to answer. We had vacancy savings, which offsets overtime lines, so in the previous three years, we were down nine officers. So salary alone, that's $500,000 each year, I would say, off the top of my head. You figure entry levels, $70,000.
So the implication there is your overtime was high in that year because you had all these vacancies.
We had nine, nine, and nine in the last three fiscal years, yes.
Yeah, so these numbers aren't comparable.
It's the only thing we had to go off of.
No, I understand, but the numbers are inflated, because the numbers in '21, '22, and the '23 actual numbers are all inflated by those nine vacancies, the overtime numbers.
So that would, would that, I mean, I'm not an accountant, but would that lend to the reason why we're $200,000 less now, because we don't have the vacancies any longer? So we're filling those billets, and patrol especially, so...
It helps, yes.
You're looking at all three, so there's overtime earnings, overtime replacement, and training. And you asked a question about training, too, and I can explain that. Just overall, when I'm looking at overtime earnings, I got data back to 2009. So in 2017, our budget was $1,050,000.
On overtime?
On overtime line, 5150.
Just on 5150?
Correct, budgeted. In 2022, it was $1,071, a $21,000 increase. Well, over that six years, at a 2% minimum, 2% increase just contractual, that'd be another, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven years, another $140,000, and we're... So those that came before us, that made me, number was cut, like when I met with Frank, and then when I went with the First Lek woman and her team, there's some numbers that were cut, because that's, as we go through, and we got to keep our budget number down, we see where we can, where we can cut. So I don't know what was done in those years. And COVID kind of messes things up, as much as overtime. It's all over the map. We weren't filling our in-house as much, but we were patrolling the beaches, because we put the moratorium on beaches that were closed, out-of-town residents. So it came in different ways that almost aren't identifiable. But I, you know, as I look at it globally and look farther back now, I see the 1.298 ask as a reduction over what this year and last year, and it brings me actually $50,000 over 2020, or 2021 of the 235.
Yeah, but what you're doing, we can't look at it in a vacuum like that. Frank, I don't know if there's somebody back in the office that can do a calculation, because I know you're stuck here. But I think what we need to do is take all the payroll lines here, sum them up, going back these few years, and see what the growth rate is year over year, from 20 to the proposed 24. Just take all the salary lines, right? And there'll be a growth rate there, because there's going to be, the ins and outs are going to be salary increases, more officer, more positions, right? So I expect to see growth there.
Sure.
But we can't look at it, we can't cherry pick and say, hey, overtime earnings looks okay year over year, without looking at actually the vacancies and the things, just like you did, right? To see, and we might be okay here. It's just very difficult for me to tell, not looking at this kind of globally, you know, to your point. If, in fact, and I have every reason to believe you're right, the way you managed your budget was between the regular payroll and the overtime payroll?
Yeah, my fear is that if we say, cut that by $100,000 or $200,000, I'm in the same boat I am this year, and I'm over budget next year at my half meeting, and I'm, you know, my half-year quarterly, and I'm saying, I'm going to be $200,000 or $300,000 budget, I'd rather come back to you and say, I have a little extra there. Maybe not, you know, I don't want to overstate by $200,000, but I don't want to understate by $100,000 or $200,000 either.
Right.
I have no idea, given the conversation, where you're going to be, to be honest. I think we've got to look at it in total on the earnings lines, add them together and just see how they come up. Because this has been, with both police and fire for years...
Right.
18 years, right? It's always been the overtime versus the regular, the overtime versus the regular, the overtime's up, this is up, there, you know, and it's getting a kind of a rationale behind that. It's always been very difficult.
Sure, if I could, you asked me to look at all of them, so overtime replacement as well.
Yeah.
Last year, we were 1.122, this year was 1181, so a slight increase. So I basically did, you know, the three-year average.
What does replacement mean?
So we have, it's actually, it's weird the way we bill it out. So if it's overtime, it's connected to your shift.
Yeah.
If it's a recall, your off-duty is replacement. They're kind of one and the same. It's almost, they're just, by our contract, they're different listed.
Right.
It's overtime versus replacement versus recall.
What causes a replacement?
So replacement goes on vacancies. People take time off.
Contractual time off.
Contractual time off. Overtime's a little more, let's say, subjective.
See, and to your point, yeah, that doesn't bother me as much on the replacements, only because everybody, you know, the 5% increase, everybody's going to be getting, you're going to have it, right? I get that. It's more on the overtime earnings and that.
There'll be a little change there as well, because our new officers have 14 days versus senior guys who have 28, but we haven't, we don't know what that number is yet, because we haven't experienced it. But it's coming.
Yeah.
And lastly, just so you, you know, you can see, we don't operate in a vacuum independently, so we're training. You asked why it wasn't more. So I went down from the last two years.
Yeah.
And I did three-year actuals, and I added, my three-year actual is actually 379, and I actually fought, well, debated with Frank on cutting that. And I asked to leave the, so I added three years' actual, and I added $100,000, just because of the newness of our officers and the amount of training we have to put them through. So we went down significantly, and you thought it was counterintuitive that with new officers it wouldn't go up. It did, it went up...
That it would go up.
Over the budgeted number, but not over the actuals. So because of COVID, because of manpower shortage, we didn't send people to training. So that's kind of changing the other way. So I budgeted 479 this year, and the accountability law has more mandated trainings.
What I was looking at, honestly, where I saw the, I saw the training line itself, the cost of training, going up.
Correct.
And I saw the overtime in training going down.
Yes.
That's what was confusing there.
Yep, understood.
And the reason for that is?
We're sending more people to class.
Well, is it lower-level people going to class, or you're not having as much? Do you see what I'm saying?
Sure, that's reasonable to say, yes.
Okay.
One other caveat on that.
Can we do that, Frank? Can we get that? Thank you.
You know, one other caveat we talked was, you know, the training line, we can always shut that faucet off. In May, we realized we're close to over budget. We could do no discretionary training, only have mandatory training. You really can't do that with...
Appropriate.
Well, but you can. We have in the past, we've shut off training in the past, but you can't shut off overtime. You can't say you're not going to go to a fatal accident or to a death scene. So there's certain things you can turn off, certain things you can't.
I don't ever want to see it turned off, I just want to make sure we're managing it.
Understood.
Right, that's really, and that's not casting aspersions or anything, I just want to make sure that we're managing the amount of overtime.
I have lived in this budget for the last year.
Yeah.
For the last two months, I've lived in munish, just to make sure my backup and my understanding.
So you know how confusing it is?
Yeah, but I feel I got a pretty good understanding, and I've been here for 29 years. I don't, you know, I'm not an accountant, I'm a cop, trying to be an accountant right now, so.
You're doing okay.
Trying to do the best I can.
You're doing okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I had on the police department.
Any additional questions for the chiefs? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
So Jennifer's recommending that we ask for a vote to move item six after item three, since the police will be present for item three. Just let them go. Jack, you want to ask them to come back? But we just did have an intense conversation about EOC.
I don't need them back, by the way. They're not going to have access to the things that I raised.
And I don't either. I'm ready to vote for that.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a vote, then, well, I guess we don't need to.
We don't need to, right?
No, we don't need to, then. Okay, very good, very good.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure, go right ahead.
Take a break. Motion to move item five before item...
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Giddy up. Thank you. So this item is regarding the Fairfield Regional Fire Training So this item is regarding the, a regional, Fairfield Regional Fire Training School. So do we just want to open it up? Is there a follow-up that you want to ask regarding this item? And then the chiefs can answer?
The only, the only follow-up I have after the discussion the other day was very similar to the ECC when we get into these scenarios where we're providing services or working collaboratively with other towns, which by the way, I think is great for, for the service reasons that everybody's demonstrated on, whether it be the ECC or the fire, regional fire school. I think we just have to make sure that we're crystal clear in the accounting for it and in our transparency back to the other municipalities, right? But my concern has always been that we're happy to host this and we're happy to invest in it. And there's a lot of benefits, chiefs, as you've pointed out, the town of Fairfield uses the facility more so than just for the training. But I also want to make sure that we're doing right by the Fairfield, by the taxpayers of Fairfield and they're paying only their burden and not subsidizing, for lack of a better word, the burden of other towns. I want to make sure that you're charging the appropriate rates, that those rates get charged, that the accounting is clear and that we go back to our colleagues and our partners that use our facilities to make sure that we, the Fairfield taxpayer in essence gets compensated for that appropriately for no more than we're due, but for what we're due. And that's, I would say that for the fire school and I say that for the ECC.
If I may comment on that. I think that what you saw from the capital sinking fund, for lack of a better term, it is clear that in addition to the operating budget, which is covered, all of the regional school expenses, regional school expenses, offering programs is covered 100% plus because portion of that profit goes into the sinking fund. So I would say that we are getting, the town of Fairfield is getting a very good deal because we're getting a very valuable facility that serves the town of Fairfield as a whole, all of the departments we talked about last week and the Fairfield Fire Department training needs covered by that cost. Our share of that cost is $37,000 in this budget. All of the capital, projected capital expenditures for repairs of the facility will be covered by that sinking fund, which is a, a very healthy $350,000 or so in that line, 315,000, excuse me. We brought that down to near zero with some remediation work that we had to do when the building was built. And we have built that up in, you know, since 2017. So you can see that in six years, we have developed and strengthened the reserves so that this year we spent $75,000 to repair the sacrificial tiles in the burned building. If there is any other damage that's caused by repetitive fires in that building that need to be repaired, we have that fund that is available, available for the, to do that. So to answer your question, we are getting a very good deal, the town of Fairfield. And the town of Fairfield is not subsidizing the regional school. The regional school, in fact, is subsidizing the operation of the building that we get the benefit for.
Do you have any?
I don't have any follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other follow-up questions on the regional fire school?
I did not have any.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thanks, chiefs.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
So do we act upon this?
It's before us, I think we should.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to consider an act upon the proposed revenues and expenditures in the amount of 326, 373 for the Fairfield Regional Fire Training School for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second it.
Can I ask a question just, just procedurally, just for the public? For, we vote on these as separate items outside of the overall budget. Can you just explain the rationale or why that happens operationally?
They're separate funded budgets. So the town has its budget. The WPCA has its budget, which is separately funded. The regional fire training school has a, has a budget that has separate funding sources. And as of last year, well, this year, this current year, ECC has its, has its own funding sources.
So given that in the, the last item before us today is about the overall, so given that they're separate budgets, but then we include them in the operating, overall operating budget? No. So that number on the bottom still includes those numbers? The number under item for, for the overall, the 354 million, et cetera?
The 354 is, is just general fund. It doesn't include any, it doesn't include the regional fire school, WPCA or ECC.
Ah, okay, so that, that math doesn't, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. I didn't actually realize that it wasn't part of the, I knew they were separate funds. I just thought you added them, okay. That's it.
All right, is there any additional comments or questions on this item?
Nope.
Nope.
And due to the fact that this is executive, public session, there's no public comment on this. And this also requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chiefs.
Thank you, chiefs.
If you want to do the ECC, we can knock it off.
Just knock it off.
Oh, okay, sure. All right.
I'll make a motion to move item.
Number six?
Six to the next, which I guess technically makes it now item five.
And I will, I will second that and I do have commentary on that.
All in favor of moving the item?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm going to open it up. Excuse me, can I get a motion to consider and act upon proposed revenues and appropriations in the amount of 3,250,301 for the ECC Center for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024?
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board.
I don't have any additional.
So I just want to refer back to our earlier discussion that I think, I'm willing to approve this, but I, I'd like to see for the Board of Finance vote the approval of the joint committee between the towns on the captain. And I also think there needs to be a harder look at the budget moving forward relative to Fairfield's percentage of that. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, but based on the framework of our discussion and some of the commentary, I want to make sure that the Fairfield taxpayers protected. I'm willing to move it forward, but I think there's some additional work to be done here. And thank you for your work on it.
So I would say, you know, obviously that is always the priority for my administration is to protect the taxpayers while delivering top-quality services for our community. And this regional center, while started to my prior coming here, I think it was a very smart idea. And, and, and I believe based on all the meetings that I've sat through and all the meetings that our police department has, man hours they have put into establishing this and making sure it runs correctly. And kudos to Sacred Heart too, I'd want to also mention that, for the space that they have allowed us to have. It's a beautiful space. I don't know if either one of you have had the opportunity to visit when they had the open house, but it is, it is, it's gorgeous. And a big, big step up from the basement of the police department where our ECC people were working. And it is, to me, the top goal in mind is, is the public safety of our residents and those who are joining in. If it, if it reduces response time to save someone's life, to me, that is our, our number one priority. And to me, that matters most. And I, we were always watching this and obviously we have that same goal in mind to ensure that our taxpayers are protected. And that's part of the overall theme over the last three years and this year included, to keep our tax rate at a reasonable rate while delivering high-quality services to our community. And I'll open it up, go ahead Nancy.
Yeah, and I would just support Tom, your request, and I would also support what you just said. I think it's both and. I think it's good to be fiscally responsible and, and looking out. And I, I don't think one is exclusive of the other. And so I, I support Tom's request for that and I support what you're saying and I don't have anything further.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion from the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. All right, so we are going to go back to item number four, if that's good with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I get a motion to consider and act upon the proposed revenues and expenditures in the amount of 8,676,432 for the Water Pollution Control Authority for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024?
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board for discussion.
Comments?
Sure.
Okay. I was hesitant in my moving this motion because I understand from the vice chair and the chair of the WPCA that they're going to be calling a special meeting to look at the budget. And I wonder, even though I moved the item, if it doesn't make more sense to, to have this conversation either moved to after, and I know we have a selectmen meeting on March 6 scheduled. I don't know if we can move it to then, but I know that information that will come out of that will be helpful. I definitely have some questions to raise today. I'd like to, you know, support this, but just feel like, one, we don't have all the information and, and I have more questions than I do comfort and answers. So I just want to put that out there as a discussion point, maybe talk about that. And if you don't agree to moving it, then I'll just raise my questions and concerns. And it may be reflected in how I'm able to vote for it today, but yeah, I, I leave that to the, you know, for us to discuss or not.
So I'm not, hmm, I'm, I'm not sure how that works. Because we have to, and I'm thinking about the calendar.
Yeah, they meet after.
I know, right. But we have to transmit the budget.
The date is March 1st. It's two months before the RTM vote is to happen by charter.
Right.
That, that you guys would have to, that the Board of Selectmen would have to vote and transfer it to the.
So what does that mean if the special meeting is tomorrow? Could we even just for that vote, delay it technically? I'm just trying to think of all our options.
Technically send the budget to the Board of Finance per the charter guidelines and rules if we were to vote on the 6th, which is after the 1st.
Can I ask, is that for the general fund or is that for WPCA as well? Is it's a separate budget?
It just says in the charter, it just says the budget.
Yeah. It doesn't, doesn't, the charter doesn't differentiate between the two.
See, I can't, I'm, I'm, I will, I'm not voting on this until I hear from the WPCA board. I don't think it's appropriate. So if, if we vote on this today, I'll vote no on the WPCA budget until I know that they've gone through it.
And for additional information, I would abstain.
And you're on the board.
Yeah, only because I know that a special meeting has been planned. I think it took them a couple of days. They did get the request.
When is the special meeting?
Tomorrow at noon.
So then we could either meet either tomorrow evening, tomorrow late day, or probably can't notice that. But we could eat, we could do a teleconference on Wednesday and still transmit the budget on March 1st. So I, I would have no issues with that.
Okay.
Hold on, let me just.
And I would.
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
I imagine we could. It's 24 hours from now. So we, in terms of noticing. And I imagine at that point of our, after that meeting, and we get an update.
Well, the other thing is since they've set a special meeting specifically to review this, you really undercut them if you.
That's right.
Prove it.
Wednesday's the first, and that's the date.
Yeah.
That has to formally be sent.
By end of business, I'm.
Tomorrow, I mean, listen, we could do a Zoom because apparently we're going to have weather. And tomorrow's, there's a possibility this building may be closed. We could potentially do a WebEx meeting. I don't know what the requirements are to call.
It could be a Zoom too.
You know, to call a meeting, how much time do we need for?
I mean, if you notice it, if you can notice it within the next hour or so and you hold the meeting tomorrow at.
What time is their meeting?
Well, 3, 4, something like that, depending on your availability, that should be fine.
Either tomorrow or Wednesday morning. I don't know if you've, I'm just saying, I'll make myself available.
Yeah, my calendar's good. Yeah, I'm happy to do it tomorrow afternoon if, you know, or after 12. How long do you think this meeting's going to go on?
For, with the WPCA? I mean, I can't ima, there are, I know there are a number of issues which I'm happy to address here.
I'd like to hear what they are, just to, yeah.
I think that there are operational questions too in terms of the audit.
Right, but the budget itself, which this is concerning, this is only the budget.
Right, I just know that their operation, their budget questions also inform some of their questions around operations. So I think, I can't speak to how long. I mean, they never seem to go more than two or three hours. So if we were to look at a 4 o'clock meeting, it might give us enough time to debrief for 5 o'clock.
Five maybe. Okay, I mean, looking here at this calendar.
There were, there were questions.
I mean, that's fine. I, I, you know, I don't see that the budget's going to change in any considerable way. It was developed by the WPCA. The WPCA Commission was engaged in it, sat with finance for, you know, numerous meetings to go over it. So I don't know that it's going to change. I, I know the WPCA used to vote on their budgets, they stopped doing it. I don't know when exactly. But are they considering voting on the budget?
They may take a sense of the body, but the question is that the budget did change considerable. I don't know what the measure of that is, but it, it changed from staff positions to staff positions. The vice chair, I know, I don't know if the chair was included in those conversations with our CFO back in November. And also revenue side, there were some questions that they had. And also again, I think the org chart may determine what they put in for. So in terms of the voting, we have voted for it in years past. So I made the false claim that we hadn't voted for it, I just didn't remember. This year we did not, but I can tell you part of that was, leads into the need for the audit in terms of not having that sort of advocate on the town side and the superintendent not reporting into anybody. It's not on the DPW director's org chart or the first select person's org chart. So I think that there's just some confusion around that.
No, there has been. And again, I think, well, all departments come through with requests. That's not necessarily how they end up.
Right.
So I think I, I spoke about this publicly. I didn't think there was enough backup and information to support what that original request was. And so, and we added the digester cleaning of the second digester, which was not included, which I felt was very important to ensure that one didn't break like the other one did. So that's fine, we can, we can do that. You want to?
Well, to the first select woman's point, the, the positions were a supplemental request and were not included in the budget, but there were, well, I'll, I'll let Frank speak to anything else that may look differently, but was, what really reflects, I think, what better reflects what the WPCA's intentions were with the budget.
Yeah, just to clarify on that, there, there were, there was a supplemental request or a request to add two positions. So, so the current year budget doesn't reduce anything, just to be clear on that. It's just that it doesn't include their two requests to add. And it wasn't included in their, in their numbers for a request for a budget. Those two additional positions weren't included in, in the numbers. Those two additional positions weren't included in the numbers. The only other thing that changed was one of their capital items, which the superintendent had agreed we could take off, was it was a, it was a redundant piece of equipment that he agreed that wasn't needed. So that was just taken off.
So a couple of clarifying questions to what you just said. And I mean, I think the consensus is to delay anyway, but I think it's good to bring these questions up. One, I just want to point out that at least one of the staff positions that I know was a project manager. And I hear you saying that the amount didn't change because you've, is it literally because you just put it towards the digester cleaning? And that was sort of the, is that, what's the math? You said it didn't change, the request didn't change. I'm asking, I'm not.
That was not the request.
So the, so the project manager was part of last year's request, and that's in there. But.
Do you recall what the two positions were? I don't recall.
The two, they were just like, they were maintenance repairmen positions. But those, so the way it works in the budget process is that when they make a request in their departmental versions, the amount of those additional positions aren't included in the number. So like, the original budget that they had requested, the positions are just requested, but the amounts for whatever those positions would be are not in the total. So they requested the positions, but it wouldn't have shown up in there. It wouldn't be in their number, so to speak.
And so I guess I just would reiterate that to me today, I wouldn't be comfortable voting. And so these are just some of the issues that I know will be discussed tomorrow and appreciate the opportunity to, you know, meet with the entirety of the WPCA so we can address some of these issues and then make more informed decisions when we do ultimately vote.
Okay. So is the consensus that we want to call for another, for a special meeting just on this one item tomorrow late, maybe 5 o'clock-ish by WebEx?
Yes, that would be mine, so.
I'll make the motion that we delay the vote on item number four. The date certain being tomorrow at 5:00 PM in a special meeting after the Water Pollution Control Authority Board has had the opportunity to further consider and approve slash take a sense of the body on this item.
We do have a motion on the table, so before I second it, do we withdraw that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't make me say it again, though.
I won't. So do I have to first make the motion?
I don't know, I'm just, mine is an amendment, actually.
So I'll withdraw my original motion, which was to hear.
You withdraw your second? To consider an act.
I'm actually asking, I'll phrase mine as an amendment to your motion.
Okay, so I'll second that amendment?
Okay. I think you can call for a vote on the amendment, I think.
All right.
To postpone to a date certain tomorrow.
To postpone to a date certain tomorrow?
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. And then who's going to handle?
Then the item is a, before us now.
Who's gonna, who's gonna?
I would respectfully request that.
Posting this. Are we, is somebody, letting somebody know? Okay, all right, very good. She's going to get a WebEx and all that.
And I.
I think it might be helpful as well for the board to be shared the WebEx link to this WPCA meeting to maybe listen in and.
That'd be great.
Some additional information there.
And can I respectfully request that this decision be communicated to the chair or vice chair through either the first select woman's office or the finance department? Just as a, I will also communicate with the chair and the vice chair, but I think your perspective would be good.
Yeah, I mean, as the Board of Selectmen's liaison, I think that would be appropriate for you to.
That would be part of the notice that goes out.
Right. Okay, what do we got? Okay.
I think we have to vote for that, because we voted for the amendment, right? And I think now we have to just vote the whole thing.
I thought it was as amended.
Okay.
Thought you amended the motion.
I'm good, I know what we're doing.
I'm happy to say for the record that I support the delay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Item number seven, to, can I get a motion to consider an act upon proposed revenues and appropriations in the amount of 354,506,469 for the general fund for the fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board for discussion. I think this would be the appropriate time, to Nancy's point earlier, to ask any questions regarding. I know there were some additional questions Nancy had on park and rec. And I think she had something on Board of Ed. And then we have those.
Yeah.
People here.
I'd like to ask parks and recs simply because my questions are very quick. Thank you for coming back. Just one thing I want to, again, just say for the record is just to consider how it may look to reorganize the way it's laid out. Just, again, someone else in conversations around the budget had brought that up. So just to think about, not asking for a response. The mowing contract, we had talked about that. When is that contract up, the 720,000?
Yeah, the contract with Greenway Mowing Property Services went into effect initially in March of '22. So they just finished their first year of their contract. It's a year-to-year contract, so there's four one-year optional renewals. So that would take us through '26, I believe, if my math is right.
It's four years?
But again, yeah, but again, we, we review that every year. So if we were to decide next year we wanted to bring all this back internally, we'd send them a letter, you know, this fall saying that we're discontinuing the contract with this.
So I would just, as a follow-up, say I support your budget. But just something to really think about for fiscal year '25, to really, it won't be me sitting here, but I encourage whoever it is to ask that question and to have you provide that answer to think about what is the most efficient and effective way forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Calabrese, I know you did an analysis, and I'd love you to step us through it just on Penfield and any additional information you have. And then last question, or another question that I had that I didn't ask the other day, I was remiss in asking the other day, is what is the revolving fund? I meant to ask, and please, gentlemen, remind me of that.
Sure, so I'll run you through the requested contingency fund for Penfield if you were to decide to keep the building open and want us to staff it. So essentially what we looked at, using the assumption of keeping the complex open through Labor Day of this current year. So essentially what that means for the '24 budget that we're talking about today is we're only looking at staffing for July and August. So essentially two months of additional staffing, assuming that the building would, again, close for remediation and fixes for FEMA. So what we did here is I looked at all the different line items that would be affected. We looked at the part-time staff, again, based on an estimate of 15 parties is essentially what we think we would maybe at most be able to pick up. This summer, staffing for that, again, is for an assistant director at 10 hours times 15 events is $3,000. Having an attendant on staff with them at $18 an hour times the $10 an hour is another 2,700. So we'd be, if you were to decide to keep the building open, we would ask that you increase the part-time staff line from 46,400 to 52,100. Seasonal staff, again, keeping open until Labor Day, that's 65 additional days, 10 hours a day. One maintenance staff at $15.75 an hour, times the 650 hours is 10,200 and change. Keeping the locker room attendant on staff, again, 65 days, 10 hours a day, $15.75 an hour. It's an additional 10,200 and change. So for that seasonal line, right now we requested 50,400. We'd be adding 20,475 to that for a total of $7,875. The social security line, I left, that's a function of the payroll. So I will let Frank at some point speak to that if he needs to. But again, I couldn't imagine that that jumps up a lot. For the utilities, you'll see the same assumption used here. What I did was I took the 12 months of actuals from the prior year, divided it by 12, came up with a monthly estimate of, for the water, it's about $250. So I added $500 to the 1,500 that was requested for a total of 2,000. For the gas, 875 a month, so 6,500 plus the 1750 for a total of 8250. And for the electric, it's 1583 a month. So the 10,000 we requested, we were just adding the 3166 to that for a total of $13,166. Maintenance repair lines, we kept the same. Communication line, we kept the same. Cleaning and janitorial increases based on the nine additional weeks. Penfield gets cleaned three times weekly. We would need to do an initial deep clean for the season opening, which is something we always do anyway. So we were adding $2,000 based on the contract for that. So that 12,000 plus the two goes to a total of 14,000. Special department supplies stays the same. Seasonal locker rentals for revenue, I'll jump to the revenue, those were the expenses. Sorry if I'm going too fast, but I know you all have a copy of this, so I'm just reading what's in front of you. For the revenue side of things, seasonal lockers, we would not be increasing this line at all. Zero is what we would anticipate. If we were to hold the locker lottery, I don't want to call it a lottery, but the locker sign up, we normally do that in March. So again, that happens during the current fiscal year, so we would see a bump in revenue this year. The chances of us getting any locker rentals from July 1 to August 1 is, are extremely slim. If we got one or two, that would be a lot. And again, these typically for a resident rent out at 200 and $300. So again, not a lot of money. The concession, if we were to decide to open the building, I've already been in contact with the concessionaire to let him know that, hey, we're kind of in limbo right now. But he is ready to go if we initially say, yep, we're, we're going forward with it. He would owe us just about $41,000 for the summer. First payment's paid in June, which is this current fiscal year. Second payment's due in August, so we would see half of that 41,000, so roughly 20,500. The Jackie Durrell rental does not change, those parties are on the books. So again, we're, we're still staying at 150 events. And then Penfield rentals, like I said, we were estimating 15 events from July 1 through Labor Day. I did an average rental rate of 2750 times those 15, which gives us that 41,000. Again, some parties, you know, for a resident on a Saturday night, it's $3,500. For a non-resident, it's $4,500. For a Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, there's another rate where it may be $2,000. So I just tried to give something in the middle there that was that 2750. So that could go up or down, but again, we felt very confident with that number if we were to reopen.
So when I put this all together, it looks like it's about 62,000 in revenue against about 37 in expense or a $25,000 increase in earnings.
Yep.
For the summer.
Correct. Pretty much what I did off the back of a napkin last week.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I'm sure you plug the numbers, good job.
Well, as some of these other people have said, they've sat in these positions. I heard the chief say 29 years, I've been here 18 years. I have a pretty intimate knowledge of our budget.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, Nancy, you.
Go ahead, now. This is really helpful, and it's more just an organizational question. I think it would help on the outset to have the RTM and the Board of Finance to be able to see this. Can it become sort of, I know it becomes part of public record, but just something that they automatically get to, to anticipate some of the questions that they might have.
I also think that you might be in a better position to know whether you're going to open the pavilion for the summer months at that point, maybe at that point you add it to the budget.
Just a comment, that's all. That's it, I don't have anything further.
All right.
Thanks, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Anthony. Okay, Nancy, you said you had something on education?
I do. Are we, did we vote?
We're on item number seven, which is the entire budget, which includes, well, everything, the general fund and the education.
So I'm going to make a motion to reinstate, is that the right word? $500,000 to the education budget.
You want to second for purposes of discussion?
For purposes of discussion, I'll second.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you for that. And I took in the conversation we had on Friday into consideration. And I just wanted to, since we have member of the Board of Ed here and the superintendent, I would just, was hoping that I could sort of ask questions by way of this discussion. Things that we looked at at the budget, which led me to this decision to make this motion. I'd love you to talk about the, there's a lot of volatility still at this point, you know, health insurance rates, fuel, utility rates. And the $350,000 grant that we've alluded to is not really a grant as it's for reimbursed expenses. So I just wanted to talk, have you talk about that? Those three issues.
Good morning still, everyone. Happy to see you today, Jen Jacobson, Chair of the Board of Education. Thank you for the question. So, yes, so at this point in the game, as you know, and the similar for the town in some circumstances, that at this point in February, on our budget, there are still some areas of volatility and unknowns. We build in assumptions on several things with best numbers available or an actuarially analysis or using some trends over time. However, there are a couple of areas. So as you know, health insurance rates have not been set. We did budget in here for the 10% increase on the state 2.0 plan, but we do not have a firm number on that yet. So if it comes in at 10 or lower, we will be happy. If it comes in higher, we would have a deficit in terms of that line item at this point. But we won't know that, and we usually don't find that out until closer to the RTM period. I would pray or hope that we could get something from the state by the time the Board of Finance votes, but it is usually much later in the process. So that is one area that I have concerns on. Utilities as well, as you all know, I mean, I'm sure it's the same on the town side and for all of our departments, just the fuel and the water or the electricity rates. Again, we didn't have at the time that this budget book was being built. It's in the narrative on the maintenance lines on our utility services, firm numbers from the purchasing department. But, you know, our CFO did as best as she could in terms of looking at our trends over time. For the increases there, you'll note that there is a decrease on that. So 2.8% at this time. Again, still waiting on firm numbers on those, though, it's still, sorry, sorry, I heard something. Was it?
People in the hallway.
Oh, sorry.
People in the hallway.
I thought it was maybe Fair TV telling me to do something different. Okay. So, yeah, those areas are not firm yet, either from the town side or for us. So that's another area of concern for me. Also, we have a lot of school year left. You know, we've been lucky so far, but I always worry about emergencies that may come up at this point in the school year until the end of the school year, since the BOE budget does not contain a contingency. And our town hasn't created a lapsing account. As you know, we usually have to go into our operating, so that may keel over. So there are several areas, at least for me, don't want to get too much into further minutia on that, but happy to answer questions on those areas or any other. But I would also love to give our superintendent an opportunity to speak to things he may have concerns on, but just would thank you for making the motion and encourage the board to support this motion until we get firmer numbers on these items going into the process of our budget with the other town bodies. And the board did a lot of questioning and vetting on this budget, several, several days, and eons of material available on our website and advocate that. The board approved the BOE budget as it's been presented to you and has vetted and approved by the board. Thank you. But I would love to give Mr. Testaani a time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
I don't have much to add from Friday. Obviously, we went through this. The one thing that was not mentioned is the unpredictability, as we all know, of special education. We have folks moving into the town regularly. A lot of folks are coming in with children that do have IEPs that we must provide support and services for. Some of those could be out of the realm of our capability. And as we're all aware, any out-of-district placements can immediately eat up our budget quickly based on the cost of these placements. But we're not going to get into that specifically now, but obviously that is always a concern from a district-level administrative perspective is the unpredictability and the high costs and the rising costs. And as we went through with the enrollment information, the number of students that are requiring special services is on the increase, not just here in Fairfield, across the state, across the. the state, across the nation. So that's always something that we're watching, and it always raises some concerns as the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Testaani. I'll open up to the board.
Just a follow-up, that, those unaccounted-for items, since there's still a lot of school, I heard the phrase last week, fire sale, and like this idea of like, we're spending down at the end, and this, can you just talk about that? Because I don't think it's necessarily like, we should be thinking about it perhaps in a different way.
Sure. From my perspective, and, you know, not speaking for the full board here, but what normally happens in the past has been that we've run multimillion-dollar deficits, particularly due to either unbudgeted emergency repairs, but primarily due to the tuition and outplacement line item. It's been a frustration of the board and other town bodies as well. And just last year, I will acknowledge everyone's efforts to lift that to a more right-sized number for this current fiscal year, and as such, even though we still have an overage in the tuition line, it is far less than what it has typically run, and therefore affected the rest of the budget. So what typically has happened, again, going back to the overages and the deficits that we've had run historically, knowing there isn't contingency, unbudgeted emergency repairs, we've always had to hold back purchase orders on the things for technology, supplies, materials, techs, what have you. The AD, the athletic department, always waited till the last couple of days of the fiscal year to put in some purchase orders across departments in our area, in case we ran into deficit, knowing that we had to end on a balanced budget within the appropriation given to the town. So the fire sale isn't speaking to there was money to spend, it was literally held-back appropriations until we knew that we actually didn't have any overages or areas that we were in deficit on in order to cover, that couldn't be anticipated in the beginning of the school year. And then working with the purchasing department and having to get all those through the purchasing department in a timely fashion before year-end close is also an additional step that we have to take into account in our processing.
I have another. The $350,000 reimbursement from the money coming in for COVID-related expenses, can you talk about that? Is that something you're guaranteed to get? Like, what does that look like? How is it going to be spent?
Well, we did get some word that we should be anticipating, well, the town should be anticipating a check on behalf of the Board of Education in the very near future. We're expecting within the next two weeks. That was the information provided, as I was ready to head over from this meeting. So we're hopeful, once we receive that, we can start spending it towards some appropriate things that we need, that, again, built into the budget for this year. We could start getting a jump on some technology purchases that would get those, because as we know, we're still dealing with supply chain issues. So if we're going to buy laptops for sixth graders, we need to make sure that we have laptops for sixth graders. So the earlier we can get those purchase orders entered and get those approved, we can get the items, hopefully, here on hand, so that we can get them prepared to distribute for the first day of school.
And Jared, what's the mechanism for that? The town gets a check? Is the town obligated? Is it sort of a promise that the administration makes that we assume it happens? Does it have to happen? I'm just curious if there's like a process for it? That, just because the check is, you had mentioned the checks coming to the town, does the Board of Ed, is that sort of state law that it's required to go to the Board of Ed? Could the town make the decision not to give it technically? I mean, not that you would, I just...
No, I mean, that would, that would be, you know, a grant that goes to them, and, you know, through our accounting mechanism, do we make sure that it's accounted for in their budget?
Okay, and it, but it's not a grant, it's a reimbursement. Correct? Okay.
So I don't have details on that yet personally. We just, the board hasn't received anything. So technically speaking, if your question is more aligned, does this become a fiscal year '24 revenue adjustment to our budget at some point? I can't speak to that at this point, and it doesn't sound like it would be if we're going to expend in '23. So again, just with the other volatilities, plus knowing we're trying to pre-purchase as much as we can to keep this budget number down, next year, that is still a lot of moving parts. So the technical question is on the revenue adjustment to the fiscal year '24, and if that would play into this. So I don't think that that's the case, but can't say at this point.
And then the last question I have on this may be an accounting one, just because I appreciate that there isn't necessarily the appetite to support this motion, and thank you for the discussion. Something I brought up the other day about ARPA contingency, and again, knowing that you want to be mindful, the administration wants to be mindful of how much it gives up on contingency to make sure that we're covered for the things that ARPA, the ARPA funding is going to cover. Is there any wiggle room? And I don't even know if this is a possible thing that I'm asking, I'm just trying to think creatively, to even sort of split the difference from, are the towns' ARPA funding to help offset some of the COVID-related expenses on the BOE side? Is that clear what I'm asking? Are you technically allowed to do it in terms of...
Technically, yes. I mean, that would be a question for...
For COVID, though, Jared, my understanding, well, you know, we always were talking about when we were appropriating the ARPA funds in our, you know, internal discussions before we brought that, before the boards, my understanding was we couldn't use it for any operating, because it creates a cliff, that it was supposed to be for...
Yeah, and that's just good practice, that we would, we would not want to use it for operating where it could create a cliff. If, if it were for a, you know, one-time COVID spending, I would, I'd want to see, I'd want to see...
For items.
Yeah, I'd want to see that, exactly what it is, and whether it is, in fact, one-time. And also, also, keeping in mind the overall ARPA funding and the other projects that we have that haven't closed out yet, and where they stand. So that, and that's why, you know, we did propose using some of the unallocated amount during the capital plan, but we did, we left that there on purpose. We left, we left some of it unallocated on purpose, because we're not, we don't know at this point how some of those other projects are going to close out. So I'd be hesitant to, you know, make a commitment now that any of that money would be used for, for some other purpose.
Because if you look at the spreadsheets that Jared keeps, Connie does reporting to the federal government per the requirements of ARPA, and then Jared does spreadsheets for the Board of Finance, just updating where projects are, you know, so on and so forth. And a lot of them are still in holding, because we haven't gotten the money, you know, we haven't gotten the materials yet, or whatever it is. But a lot of these projects that are already committed aren't fully, they're not, we haven't spent the money yet. So we haven't gone out, we haven't gotten the materials, and our concern is projects we already committed to, three town, three funding bodies approved, we just want to make sure that we have the money to do those projects, because things have gone over. And as we can see, just in average, everyday life, things are going over what they originally were costed out at, as. So we were very cognizant to keep a healthy buffer, because as you know, the list of projects is a lot. We have a lot of projects on that list. Now, some are completed, right? The playgrounds and things, but there's other projects, you know, Rooster River, you know, that's, that's a whopper project. And, you know, we're hitting some issues with permitting, and DEP telling us they want us to do different things, so that could spike that cost presumably, and I obviously wouldn't want to touch a hair on that project, because those people have been flooded out for over 20 years, and I don't want to jeopardize anything to do with that. So there's a lot of moving parts there, so I would be uncomfortable doing that.
And just respectfully, moving forward, again, knowing that there isn't the appetite in this moment around this table, I just encourage perhaps the Board of Finance to think creatively, like Mr. Testaani brought up, computers, for instance, as a COVID-related expense, that perhaps there's a way to think about helping the Board of Ed making up that difference, because appreciating that the cut in the, it's still, I understand that it's still, you've given...
Reduction, not a cut.
It's a reduction, not a cut, and I appreciate that, and I, but it is a cut to the budget that's being proposed. And, and again, while a small one percentage-wise, it also breaks down to $24 a household, which I also don't think is insignificant for some households. I just encourage us to look at it holistically, and the potential impact on the students. So these are likely, again, for point of discussion, and just things for the bodies down the line to think about. And I appreciate the opportunity that, you know, to give you the opportunity to talk about some of the things that I hope future bodies will consider.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone, if...
I'm going to open it up to the board.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. Thank you for being here, and thank you to your board for all your hard work on this. Mr. Testaani, I want to once again wish you the best moving forward. I'm particularly interested in future years and in your objective views, because I think that's important to come in from the outside and take a look at the way we're doing things, and what structurally can be changed, because it's a challenge. You know, as I referenced last week, one of my concerns through the course of the years is kind of the quote-unquote business model here of continued rising costs and stabilizing or lowering tuitions. And there, or not tuitions, enrollments. And then factored in with your very real comments regarding teachers and the challenges in keeping teachers in today's model, and I think we need to be cognizant of that for future years. Look, by definitions, budgets involve estimates and assumptions. There's an element of risk in everything that we do. Thirty-six months ago, or what have you, with the element of risk that we didn't see at this board, was COVID. And in 21 days, all hell broke loose, and the budget had to be redone.
Yeah.
In the past, just to be clear, though we don't have a specific fund, the town has stepped in, and when circumstances have warranted, the town has given the Board of Ed funding for certain things in the course of the year. It happened when I was on the Board of Finance many years ago. It also happened with their, with their funding of insurance many years ago as well. So that has happened in the past. This reduction represents 0.2%, not 2%, 0.2% of the overall budget. Essentially a rounding error in the grand scheme of things. The discussion is funny, because it implies that one of the reasons for this is, or the need for this, is the uncertainty, but then implies the level of specificity that is impossible at this level of discussion relative to those, those costs. It could go either way. As we saw just a couple of years ago, I think the Board of Ed budget was underspent by a couple million bucks, as I recall, or at least several hundred thousand that was turned back to the town. So I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate the need for the Board of Education and the superintendent to advocate for their budget, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into it. I will support the reduction of 500,000, because I think it's, it's appropriate, and I think it's, it's livable. And again, I look forward to what you can do in the future, because it, things need to change on this side, only because I fear that we're running people out of town on the older end of the spectrum, and I don't think that's good for anybody. So I thank you, and Ms. Jacobson, I thank you for all your hard work on the budget this year, and please extend that to your board.
I absolutely will, and I just wanted to respond really quickly. Mr. Flynn, respect your, you know, perspective and vision on this, but if $500,000 was a rounding error to this board, we would have made it ourselves. So respectfully, we can disagree on that. And number two, thank you for the reminder that it is very likely that, impossible for us to go in front of the other town bodies when we have an emergency in the future. Look, oop, am I here? And not necessarily always, I think that we need to take it out of our operating budget, so I'll take that into consideration in the future as well. So thank you so much for your comments, but still ask you for your vote, support the motion. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I mean, just to be clear, Frank, do you know what the 0.24% equates to regarding households? I mean, just, I just wanted to...
I think it was 24.
But I don't know that that's an accurate number.
0.25.
No, 0.24% of...
0.25.
I think it was 0.24.
You had us at 3.8, correct?
No, no, I think, I think you're asking for clarification on the dollars per household.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Correct.
Is it 0.25 reduction cost?
Yeah, I think it was 21,000 households divided...
That's what I, I did that math. I might have done it wrong, but I basically divided 500,000 by 21. Yeah.
Four cents, is that what it is?
Oh, is it? Did I even...
You just, yeah, I think it just transposed, but I think it would be about four cents.
So, no, I appreciate you, you doing that, and listen, I think we should all advocate for what, you know, what we think. And I, you know, I spoke about this during our meeting on Friday, that we obviously, you know, have to be careful about everything we spend. I have to as well, and I think I brought this up...
Yeah, 24.
During Friday, that, that, you know, when I'm building this budget, I get a lot of requests, and I want to give, you know, the police everything, and the fire everything, and the DPW, and everybody everything. Every, I want to give everybody everything. But it's just like your children, right? They come to you, and they want this, I want that, and you said, okay, well, here's how much I have, I just don't have it. So, you know, I speak from a place of someone who grew up in this town, who, who did not come from means, who came from a family who raised 15 kids. My grandparents raised 15 kids in a house without plumbing, without indoor plumbing. And so there are people in our town, like I mentioned Friday, who live paycheck to paycheck, who have worked really hard to get, to move into this town, who have, like, given everything they have, just so they could either rent an apartment, or, you know, purchase something that needed a ton of work, just so they could have the privilege of living in this community. And, and we have our seniors, again, who, who are living, you know, on fixed incomes. And, and I, as I mentioned Friday, you can talk to Carol Martin, and, you know, her waiting list is 10 years out for people who want to get in or want to stay. You know, it's, it's incredible how many seniors reach out to me who say, you know, I just can't afford my house anymore, and is, can I get on the list for affordable housing? And you know what? They can't, because the list is 10 years long. And so there are a lot of people like me who moved their mother into their house because their mother couldn't afford to live on their own anymore. There's people who are having a difficult time. So to my point, on Friday, you know, our community is, what makes our community so incredibly special and wonderful is that its diversity, not its economic diversity. And so I want to keep our community economically diverse. And again, I made some really tough decisions in the town budget during the budget process. I spent months and months and months, and I had to make crucial decisions, and the same is true here. I did note on Friday that I thought that the superintendent and the Board of Education did, their, their request was reasonable, and I thought they made some good decisions, much better, I think, than in the past. But again, I think we still need to tighten up a little bit everywhere, and that, I didn't, didn't offer this reduction in, in a way that I thought it was going to make a huge impact on any, any individual child or the overall budget. I think it's just a tightening of everybody's belts, and sometimes you need to, sometimes everybody needs a little sort of alignment, that's all. And so inflation, we have tough inflation right now, and like I mentioned on Friday, nobody's salaries, very few people that I know, including myself, salaries has changed in the last three years, but their costs have gone up considerably. Their oil, to fill their oil tank, to pay their UI bill. I mean, UI is looking for a huge increase, and I, God, I hope that PURA denies it. And, and you've got, you know, Aquarian asking for big increases. People are really getting squeezed. They're getting squeezed everywhere, and I know it's easy to say, well, it's only 500,000, or it's only a million, or it's only this, or it's only that. But you know what? It adds up. It adds up, and it adds up to mill rate increases, and it hurts, it really hurts people who have to pay that extra money. So I feel confident in our new superintendent and our Board of Education to manage this, just as I am trying my best to manage a town of 62,000 people, and with a lot of needs, trying to just make sure we, we deliver top-level services for an affordable rate. And so that's my comments.
I respectfully, completely agree with what you've said in terms of everything adds up, and I don't want to diminish or undermine the impact that $24 on a household could have, and I think philosophically...
have. And I think philosophically, you know, separate from this, I think it begs the conversation and, and sort of deep thinking about what we can do additionally as a town to help offset for those, you know, senior tax relief and other areas where that $24 is a burden, because I imagine there are also lots of people, and I never want to count anyone's money, for whom they'd be more than happy to spend that extra money to offset either those that can't and to, to make sure that the students aren't impacted. We're not going to solve that problem here, but I urge sort of creative thinking about what we could do so that people aren't feeling as squeezed as they do. So I appreciate the discussion. I'll only add that, you know, with every department that we've asked, and this is something I mentioned Friday, you know, we ask department heads to give us the budget that they feel that they can have, that they feel that they can successfully manage their department. This is the budget that was given to us. And, you know, I want to be able to defer to the experts, in this case, the Board of Ed and the superintendent. I also agree with what you said. This is a top-notch crew. They're going to do what they need to do. But, you know, I wish that we could give them holistically the tools that they've asked for. So I do appreciate the discussion.
No, I appreciate it. And not, you know, listen, we can, we can always agree to disagree respectfully. And I think we set a good example for the rest of our community going forward if we continue to do that.
Do you have anything further, Tom?
I'm good.
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate the time. I do believe it's a good budget. And I think you guys have all agreed that it is. And I do understand that, I have no idea what it's like to run the entire town. I can only speak from a Board of Ed as a superintendent running the school district. But I do appreciate the difficult decisions. I do come from a different perspective, as you're aware. So the investment in public education here in the town should be recognized as town bodies. There is a commitment to education here in Fairfield that is obviously producing some outstanding results. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wouldn't want your job either.
Good luck. I don't have further questions on the motion on the table.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second on item number seven. And just to reiterate--
Just the item about the Board of Ed reduction.
Oh.
Because I do have other questions on the budget.
So we did, we did have, I'm sorry, you're right. I apologize. So we have a motion on that, and we have a second for discussion purposes. So I'm going to ask, your motion was to put back the 500,000 in the budget. There was a second. We discussed it. And I'm going to call that, that specific motion for, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And no abstentions, and the motion fails.
Okay.
Two to one.
I don't have any other motions. I just have a couple of questions and comments.
Oh, okay. Do you, okay, before we vote--
Before we vote.
--on item number, sure. Go right ahead.
The vote before us is on the overall--
Thank you.
--operating--
Thank you.
--budget, right? Just for clarity?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So can I jump into some of the questions I have?
Go right ahead.
Okay. With human resources, I just encourage, and again, some of these are more commentary before, this is the last time I will sit around the budgeting table at the Board of Selectmen level. So I just want to, you know, make sure I, I get some of the points in as my parting gift. With regards to human resources, something was in the paper this weekend about allegations of misuse of town credit cards. And I just want to remind the Human Resources Department, I am supportive of this budget. I'm supportive of the additional hires in, in the Human Resources Department. I just want to underscore the need for policies and procedures, job descriptions and metrics. I want to, us, the Human Resources Department to look at FOIA, given that this alleged misuse was discovered through a FOIA discovery of a resident. I just don't want to discourage residents. I, I think we have to discourage the misuse of it, but I don't want to discourage residents with this charging. And in some ways, I want to make sure that they feel they have enough staff. You know, it is the first year with the new director, and she does have a, a huge, tall order in front of her, which is why I'm supportive of the two positions. But given the nature of all that needs to change in the coming year, certainly, and in the years to come, around racial equity and diversity, that they have a proactive versus a reactive approach to human resources, that there are some vacancies to fill, and that it's always a snapshot. So they're going to constantly having to be looking at that. I, I just want to sort of bring my areas of concern, although, as I said, it's mostly to support the staff that they have, but just to also address those issues of concern that we talked about last week with the, with the new director of Human Services. So not really questions there, but comments. Can I, should I keep going?
Yes.
With regards to the town attorney, he separately offered some breakdown, and I see there's some addendum items here. And similar to the Parks and Rec Department, I think it's really helpful information in terms of the breakdown, and if that is something you could consider handing off to the other town bodies. So I appreciate that it is public record now, but to sort of be proactive in terms of what that amounts to. In IT, and I'm just going chronologically, in IT, we had a question about that $75,000 capital outlay for storage. And you were going to find out, was it kind of a one-time hardware thing? Was it a software thing? Sort of what, what is that?
I can, that, that, it's going to be recurring. It's part of a multi-year, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a three-year, at least at, at the time when the, when Dave Kelly was looking at this, he estimated the, the cost of this in total and replacing the storage that we have right now. And it was estimated over three years that, that's the amount that we would need each year.
Also pointing out in the Board of Finance line item for the audit fee, the annual audit fee, it just could use some clarity. I think people didn't know what that was. And it's just the fee, the audit fee for the expenses that get reported in at a quarterly basis, I think.
I don't understand. What is that?
It's a line item in the Board of Finance budget for $104,000. That's their audit fee. And I think it just raised some confusion, at least on some of the inbound commentary I got.
What's the confusion?
Just what it is and why--
Isn't that the annual audit fee?
Some people don't understand what, the layperson, there were some questions from laypeople. I know the Board of Finance knows what it is. We know what it is. But again, just general commentary.
I thought I missed something. That's why--
You did not miss.
Yeah.
I thought it was worth pointing out, especially because some people couldn't hear me, because I wasn't speaking into the microphone, that solid waste and recycling, supportive of that budget, but also contingent on the fact that they, the commission would be coming up with its plan based on the plan from the state of Connecticut. So eager to see what the commission produces out of that, and just wanted to state that for the record. And then from a purchasing perspective, it would just be great to know moving forward what systems are in place for any redundancies across departments and, and how that information is public and how we can see how it's tracked, given the fact that materials, supplies were a large driver across several budgets. Again, just a, a general comment on what would be nice to see moving forward. I want to underscore from human health and, human health services, am I getting the name of that department right, that Julie DiMarco provided information, and she was quick to respond that the jump in, in seniors--
The increase, not the--
It was, exactly. So there is an increase. She feels good about the staffing. It, the way it had read initially was that there was like a jump to thousands.
Yeah, it wasn't, I think it was, it, it could have been worded better.
But to, to also compliment Julie on sort of her listing those metrics on how we saw the addition of a staff person from fiscal year 24, how it benefited us over the last year. And then, again, with the other agencies, I just encourage for future, one, the, the Fairfield Museum, I think it would be helpful for people to see that it's not a $12,000 increase, that it's, it's a flatline, that that $12,000 is to cover expenses that it, from the town, that it covers, that the Fairfield Museum covers. And then also just, you know, metrics moving forward on, on how those budgets are allocated. I would also say for future that those agencies represent a very small percentage of our budget, less than a million dollars. And I know that this community is invested in the arts and those other not-for-profit agencies. And I would just urge, again, knowing that we need to look at priorities, I would just urge any administration moving forward to really think about how we spend on our arts organizations and our other not-for-profits. And then finally, I want to echo that I am supportive of this budget and will be voting yes. But really procedurally, and I, I don't think it interfered with the product in this case, but I would say that the budget was given on, over the course of a holiday weekend. The first selectwoman, first selectman has plenty of time to, to work with it and look at it. And it is just a feeling, but it, it makes the minority member feel that the participation is perfunctory. I've done a lot of homework. I feel well-prepared to vote today. But I just think attention should be given to longer-term participation and a longer timeframe to look at it. And organizationally, I think columns from what was requested versus ultimately what's allocated was removed. That may not be information that's useful long-term, because I know it's a back and forth, but just something to think about for transparency. And also having all of the agencies and anyone that has a line item. I know the Board of Finance doesn't do it that way, because it would take years and days. But as this is the first time that we as a body really get to engage in the book, again, as a minority member, it does feel somewhat perfunctory, although I do feel I've served an important role in asking questions, having the chance to hear from each of the bodies that has a line item, even if it's just to say, even if it's with their descriptions in the book. Like, I missed having the Fairfield Museum have their description. So just things to think about, not criticisms, but really constructive opportunities. But for, for what is going to be my last time sitting around the budget table at the Board of Selectmen, as I've said, I'm not rerunning, or it's been said, I'm not running, rerunning. I just want to say that I think at least in the last four days that we've engaged, I thought the conversations have been productive. Could have been made more, you know, again, just if you could think about some of the things that I've suggested here today, I would appreciate that. So.
Well, thank you.
I have no further questions or comments.
So I've got a few. First of all, Nancy, I never thought that you were perfunctory in this at all. And thank you for your time and effort and your insightful questions.
And my highlighters?
That I don't know. I don't get your highlighters, but the rest of it, no. A few comments from me on the budget, and I do have a few follow-up questions and comments, as well on specific line items, based on information provided today. So thank you for that. Number one, just overall, I think this was a real solid budget. Congratulations.
Thank, in a tough economic time, the town delivered a reasonable budget here and with some creative solutions to, to some pressing issues. And certainly, as we look at what the capital needs of the town are, this is going to become even, even more pressing in the future years. So I give you great credit for that. I do, I would be remiss if I didn't say that the two areas that concern me within, not so much the budget, but the, the way fiscal management of the town has gone through decisions from the Board of Finance last year and the like, was the repeal of basically any funding of risk management contingency. And I think, not in the short term, but in the mid to long term, that creates risk for the town. I have been along, I have been around long enough to see those risks, whether it be the Madoff scandal that happened a number of years ago, the economic downturn that happened in 2012, the COVID situation that happened just a couple of years ago, and the Phil Pyle scandal, which, by the way, one of the reasons that we're able to weather the Phil Pyle scandal is, from a financial perspective, this is, some of the stopgaps, some of the protections, some of the financial policies that were put in place over the last decade or so, had allowed us to actually weather that storm a bit better than many other communities could. It's a shame we had to. It's a shame we continue to have to. But if we hadn't done what we had done over that period of time, it could have been dramatically different, and it could have impacted the town's credit rating. And right now, we haven't had to do so. I also see on the horizon, there are some significant changes in accounting, more complexity relative, you know, to how we account for things such as the regional fire school, the ECC. And as we get into this regionalization period and where we're looking to partner, which I fully support, but I say that that comes with additional complexity on the accounting for that and digging deep. I would also say, as I referenced the other day, I'm fully supportive of these not-for-profit partnerships. I, I do believe that these not-for-profit organizations have a significant role to play in our town, I think, in our community broader. And I think they provide valuable resources at reasonable prices in a much better and more efficient way than a government could. That being said, I would urge the town to continue to look at how we interact with those agencies. There was a good bit of work done a number of years ago by representatives of the Board of Finance, and I believe the RTM, I know, Kristowit, who serves on the Board of Finance, was, was a big proponent of this, in managing how we interact with our not-for-profit organizations. And I would encourage the town to go back and kind of look at that and, and see what can be done there. Another area that I, I think we're going to talk a little bit about is the investment income. And I just want to be mindful, I think we're absolutely correct, to take advantage of the interest rate opportunities right now. I give the Finance Department great credit in what I'll call the professionalization of the management of our investments, of the town's cash. I think that's great. I think it's to the benefit of the town and, or to the taxpayer. It's also to the benefit of the town in, in managing risk of our investment income. We're, we are budgeting in this budget for the utilization of that return. And I think we just need to be mindful that that return will, over time, diminish again. And we need to be cognizant of what that means. On the Board of Education side, I took great comfort in some of the superintendent's comments. And I'm sincerely hopeful that he will bring an objective approach to the Board of Education budget and the discipline that's required to both appropriately fund needed and required programs, while looking at maybe some programs that might have run their course, and balancing the needs of the district versus some of our past practices, so that they can adjust the, the budget accordingly on the go-forward years. I'm very concerned about that. I continue to be very concerned about that. I also wish them the best in their redistricting efforts. That's not an easy task for any of you, and, and I, I wish you the best in that. Otherwise, the one last thing, because Nancy brought it up, and I would just, this is a programming note. Madam first selectwoman, I'd ask that in, maybe next week for our meeting or what have you, we hold an executive session and get a bit more information on this credit card situation, just because it's hit the press. And I'd like to know a bit more about what's going on there. I've been getting some questions on that. And, and I know we can't talk about it publicly, and I'm not asking to talk about it publicly, but I'd like to hold a private session on that. And then lastly, I have some commentary on specific line items of the budget, if I might. Does anybody have any? Thanks.
Very good.
First one is, there was a document handed out this morning that was litigation fees. Question, and this just might be nomenclature. And I hate, I got to say it this way. Number one, I'm surprised that, how low this amount is, given all the litigation that's gone on. So I'm wondering if I have the appropriate definition and terminology in my mind. Is this actual litigation, or is this overall legal fees for the town?
So that's just the breakdown of how we got to, I just want to reference the page. Just give me a second. It's in org 1270. So page-- It's in Org.1270, so Page 75. That's the breakdown. On Page 75, there's appropriation by category area. It says 302,000, and that's the breakdown of that litigation area, which was, my understanding, was requested.
Okay, so it doesn't include conservation, doesn't include tax appeals, got it.
And if I could interject and say that Mr. Baldwin provided information separately to me in writing that I think would be helpful, that I believe, you may or may not have been included on it, but it was a further breakdown, including many pages of Munis reports, just for the past year to, for comparison, but he did further break down some of the expenses in terms of category, which I think we should submit into sort of public record. And I will forward it, if you're not on it, Jared or Frank, to share with the board so it becomes part of the record.
I would appreciate that, yeah. The other item, can we go to, can we go to the investment income calculation? Can you, or it's not the calculation, it's the information, Nancy, I'm referring to this, the quarterly that was provided today.
It's separate.
Yeah. Can you, can you gentlemen step me through this schedule? And I might interrupt with questions, so I apologize in advance.
Sure. This is the, this is organized by quarter. I'm looking at the last four quarters, last full four quarters of investment information. And this is where, at that time, where the money, where our investment income resided. So for example, we look at Quarter 3, we had the People's Money Market account at $43 million, and then the various investments outside of our bank, outside of the bank that holds our cash, where we had money invested. And these could be in different forms. Some of them could be CDs. There are, I believe, still a few bonds that we hold, money market. So there could be a variety of different areas. But that group makes up the basis, really, for our assumption that we would have $100,000, $100 million to be invested. Obviously, the amount there is greater than that, and so we are, we're being a little bit conservative in terms of what would be able to be invested. And then, you know, I'll pop back up to the People's for a second. So that's the money market account. We have a sweep account that gets used for our daily expenditures that go out. And so there can be fluctuation, these are obviously as of a point in time.
Yeah.
So there can be fluctuations in these. And so the People's Money Market, if we know that there is a large payroll period or something else coming up that we need to fund, that there could be transfers out of the money market account into the sweep account to be sure that those payments get made.
So Jared, I guess that was one of the things. Do you do a 12-month cash flow projection going forward? Because this is looking back, it's not looking forward. I get comfort from it because the numbers are, you know, over $150 million, so I get it. But I do have some questions over, you don't do anything looking forward?
So we kind of use this to, we use something like this for quarters, for past quarters as a projection of what's going to happen.
The only problem with that is this has ARPA in it.
It's not going to be, right, so, and we're cognizant of that. And you see the jump in People's Money Market between Quarter 4 of '22 and Quarter 1 of '23.
So what I did is, is our natural, my apologies for interrupting, I'm just, are we naturally around 150 and then the 2, and the 210, that relates to the ARPA funds?
In part, but there's also, there's the bond proceeds that are, would fall within that period too. And so we know that there's going to be a jump from Q4 to Q1.
So how much of this would you say is natural versus bond and ARPA? Just because I, get me to the, get me to why the hundreds are right.
I would say, right now, I would say about, I would say about 32, let's see.
You can round it.
Yeah, I would, I would say roughly, yeah, about 40 of it is probably ARPA and bond proceeds.
Together.
And I'm, right, and I'm talking at this, what I see at this point in time, of what's been spent from bond proceeds, which we've been tracking, and what's been spent from ARPA.
So what's the lowest number, this 156 or so? What's, what's about the lowest you've seen it? I mean, like, again, give me comfort that the hundreds are right. And I assume you're getting to the 100 by collapsing this middle stanza, right? You're basically saying that middle stance is going to go away, right?
That's right, right. What's the lowest? I'd have to go back and look to see what the, what the lowest would be of all the, of all the cash that's there.
And you're going to manage the People's Money Market tighter because if you take 40 mil out of ARPA here, right, and the amounts at the end of the quarters now available for investment come closer to that 100 million.
That's right. And that's where we get our, yeah, that's where we get our 100 million for. We, there's, there is enough, based on our past experience and what you see in this, in this history, there's enough in that, looking at Quarter 2 FY '23, that there's enough in there for whether it's going to be project payments for bond projects, ARPA payments that may go out, as well as any, you know, day-to-day expenses that come up. We're comfortable with that.
Okay. Thank you on that. And the last thing I have, Frank, thanks for the quick work on this. We went back and we did an analysis, Frank did the heavy lifting, I was just the pain in the rear end on it. On the payroll for the police across, we went back all the way to 2019. And when you add it all together, because you really, the problem with this is, is when you look at just regular plus overtime and all that, or when you try to just look at regular, there's too many ins and outs. Then you just try to look at overtime, and as we saw when I had the discussion with the chief, you're just looking at ins and outs. So what you really need to do is look at payroll and maybe for future budgets, this is what we need to do. You need to put the earnings all in one bucket and say how it looks. That might be a good way, Frank, to organize it going forward in the, in the budget presentation. Because this brought up the clarity. So we looked at it, and we said, okay, forget all the buckets. Put salary and earnings and compensation one year over salary and earnings and compensation to the other year, and then say what the impact is. And we saw that in 2023 versus 2024. You put in the increase in compensation and the like, and you add that all in, and the union stuff, as well as the transfers in, and you have an increase of 5.58%, right? That's a natural increase. Then you say, okay, in the 2024 budget, there's an increase of one officer of about $73,000. Okay. So you factor that in, and you say what the increase should have been in salaries is 6.29%, right? That's what the natural increase is when you add it all together. The increase as represented by the budget is 6.69, so it was higher, right? When you do the math, that 0.4% of that increase relates to $54,000. So that $54,000 is essentially kind of overage, the way I look at it. So my motion would be, and would be to take the overtime earnings account under the police budget and reduce the budget by $54,000 relative to what they're asking for. And that's due to this calculation, as well as the way the budget was put together, as well as the fact that we're giving them a new officer. So my motion on the floor would be to reduce the police department budget. Can you give me the line item, please, on overtime earnings?
It's 51050.
51050, by $54,000.
I'll second it. Can you?
Sure. What do you need?
In three sentences or less?
Yeah.
Can you sum up your rationale for?
Yeah.
That reduction?
The, when you look at the year-to-year increase, it should be earnings increase, like rate increase, and the extra officer, okay? That's what it should be. When you do that calculation, it's $54,000 less than what they're asking for, which means they're asking for either more rate or more hours, right? It's not necessary. You're giving the extra officer, and you've already factored in the extra rate. Hope that was clear enough.
It's clear. I'm just wondering what the 54,000, because it would write itself in terms of if they're not spending it.
Yeah, but you're taxing the taxpayer too much, and I want to hold them accountable for their budget.
So I'm not, I'm not going to support this. Obviously, as Keith said, you know, he's been with the department for 29 years. He knows the budget, the chief knows it, I trust them both. I think their budget came in in a rate that makes sense. The additional staffing request is based on service, calls for service, the size of our town, the increased demands upon our department for a number of reasons, most notably the Police Accountability Act. And so I am, you know, I'm not running a police department, and we have a lot of meetings, we flush this out. I think they made a case for their budget. I think it is appropriate, and I don't want to second-guess our police department and in this, in their operating budget. And again, if there is additional funds that are left over, as Deputy Chief Broadbrook mentioned, it will be returned back to the town. And as we have seen over the past number of years, couple of years since I've been here, we use those surpluses for, unfortunately, Penfield, I mean, contamination issues and other unfortunate matters. So it's a small amount, and I don't really see the purpose of it, so I'm not going to support this.
That's fine. Number one, they argue that their budget methodology of taking a three-year average was flawed. That's first. Second, the entire concept of what we do here is second-guess the department budgets. That's our role, because we're, we sit as objective arbiters, and to ask questions to peel back issues with budgets. And that's what I did, was I asked the question, how did you calculate it? And it was a three-year average. And then when you go back and you actually do a calculation based on kind of hours and rate, you get closer to my number. And I think we need to hold people to that, because for way too many years, the overtimes in some of these departments get a bit high. So that's the reason for, and it's, and by the way, that has nothing to do with not trusting them or not thinking, that has nothing to do with it. It has to do with when you come in and you can be objective, and as Keith said, he's not an accountant. He's, he only plays one on TV right now.
He works with the Finance Department.
Yeah, he has worked with the Finance Department, but the Finance Department also worked with me on this after we looked at the assumptions. So that's fine.
I appreciate the math equation. I'm more inclined not to support it for other reasons, because $54,000 sort of cushion, if you will, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about, or I had asked questions about, did they have enough support and time to do the paperwork? And I sort of kept driving that point home. And I just feel, at least for, you know, one more fiscal year, to give the department an opportunity to kind of like write itself in terms of the change in technology, getting, you know, a 2020 accountability bill, they're still feeling the impact, and just in terms of the paperwork. And I just don't like that as an excuse for not having enough support to do the policing. If it really is just the question of, like, they did the math wrong, I would understand it, but I think for 50...
They did.
What's that?
They did.
But, but again, based on averages, so it's not hard, like, one plus one equals two, it's sort of, some of it's conjecture. And I feel like to have a $54,000 wiggle room based on...
The only thing I want to say, and my apologies for interrupting.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't mean that. It's not based on averages. Your point's still valid.
Yeah.
But it's not based on averages. This was just straight math. Rate increase that they have, plus the new officer.
So with you, with what you're saying and how you're pointing it out, and I see it, I know what you're saying, you're sort of, are you, does it then allude to, like, not double-dipping, I don't want to say that, but it's sort of like adding the same number twice, so that's why they get to the higher number, like, rate plus...
The way, the way they calculated it, right, is they took, and we use this in some of our other budget methodologies, they took a three-year average of overtime and said, we're going to use the three years, and we're going to carry it forward for 2024, which, if everything else remains constant, okay, I get it, right? But when you take it and you say, okay, you've got the increase in rate, and then you've got one more person, there's only so many hours in the day, right? We don't, there's only so many officers that we use. So that's, and it's not, it's not a large cut. I'm just saying the math doesn't work.
And I totally, I want to say, respect your expertise in this area. I would say that I'm not going to support it, only because it's now going on to the Board of Finance, and what we've done is given them this opportunity to look at it in a different way, and...
That's fine.
And I, I hear what you're saying, I see, I get it. It's not that I'm not understanding, I just think with, again, with the $54,000, some leeway, if you will, given the conversations that we've had, I'm comfortable passing it on without that cut, by passing on the budget to the Board of Finance without that cut.
Fair enough.
Which is to say, you know, my approval today of the overall budget is not unfettered. I think I've given, we've given a lot for our colleagues on the Board of Finance and the RTM to think about, and I really do hope that they'll take all of these things into consideration, both philosophical and, and just the hard lines and the hard line items in the budget. So with that in mind, I'm not going to support the motion.
Great. Let's call it for...
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have a motion and a second?
We do.
Okay. Discussion we had, all in favor of this reduction to the police department's budget?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Aye. So the motion fails, two to one. We are back to the main budget, which we already had a motion and a second on and discussion.
Madam Chairwoman, I think we have some adjustments that come directly from the Finance Department based on better available information that I think we should take up before we pass it along.
Yeah, so just a few adjustments here.
Reference page, or is it just Page 8, 9?
You could just really reference, I think, the summary page, which I believe, I think that's Page 8. But I'll call out the numbers. So within our self-insurance, just to update our numbers based on the projection from our insurance brokers, it would be Org.1320, Object 52100, health self-insurance. And I would say that we should go from $11,246,159 to $11,511,204, and that would be a $265,045 increase. And like I said, that's based on the projections from, for health insurance.
We should note, we had a private executive session on these comments, so just, just for the record. And I'll make that motion to improve, to move that.
So can, do you want to make the complete motion with the language, Tom?
Gee, thanks. Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we increase the funding of...
We amend the, you want to amend?
Well, we amend, we amend the original budget to increase the funding in the health insurance account number, if you don't mind.
Yeah, what's the number?
Oh, sorry. Org.1320, Object 52100.
But what's the actual money?
$265,045 is the increase.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Just to echo, I support what you were saying about, we had an executive session, and just, we were unanimous in our understanding and agreement.
Yep.
So we're at the motion. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries on the amendment.
And then I think we have another one as well.
Yes. Just after discussions about debt service, I went back and just, you know, double-checked all the calculations, and I noticed that, just for our interest of bands, I had included the net number instead of a gross number. It only amounts to $8,980, but that would be changing Org. 10030 and Object 58610 from $183,728 to $192,708. And like I said, that would only be $8,980 of an increase.
Somebody else want to make that motion?
So moved. Yeah, if you could repeat the language as, as-
So we're adding to, per the record, what the budget director said, which will increase the budget by $8,980.
Correct.
Got it?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Additional discussion?
No, I would just like when, when you've done overall any of these changes, just the new, and what it might change for the percentages.
Okay. So all in favor of this amend?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are back to the main motion. Frank, could you give us the new number of our budget? It's obviously different than what was reflected on the agenda.
Sure. Sorry, everybody, just give me a-
Can I make a comment while he's doing that math? Tom, your conversation around the overtime just leads me to recall, and I may be not remembering it correctly over the past few days, and it might have been in engineering, where we might have the same issue with, like, an extra person and overtime, that if they bring in that extra person, would it reduce the need for overtime? Again, it's not going to impact my-
I don't remember it in engineering, honestly.
Okay, it's, I'm remembering something, so again, just in the spirit of passing along to our colleagues down the line, to something to, to look at overall, if that's the case. It doesn't impact my decisions today, but it, it is a good sort of broad conversation to have, that if there's an addition of staff, we should make sure that each of the departments are looking at overtime.
Yep. Thank you.
I agree with you. And then you had one, did we do that one? I'm sorry.
We did too. We did.
Yeah, and what's the third one?
If we have a third one, then we shouldn't do the calculation until we have all the numbers.
The third, so the third one is, relates to the collection rate. So, but the expenditures, it's not going to change the expenditures in the, in the budget, so I don't know if you-
Oh, okay. So then if you could give me the final number?
I think we should vote on the collection rate, or at least state an opinion on the collection rate.
Okay.
So that it's-
So I can move on to that.
Yeah, if, if you wouldn't mind, Frank.
So based on discussions we had last week about the methodology used in prior, in last year in the mil rate set in meeting from the Board of Finance, we said that we, that based on the average collection rate, which is what they did last year, that we could increase the collection rate from 98.90% to 98.99%. And so I would just say that we could make that administrative change and change the collection rate, the assumed collection rate to 98.99.
And what's the dollar impact on that?
The dollar impact would be, if we, actually, with the increase in spending, it would be, sorry, it would actually be $274,025, so it's going to come to the, to the same amount of the adds.
Unique. Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we adjust, based on our discussion with the tax collector last week and the analysis provided, that we amend the assumed collection rate to 98.99%, thereby increasing the revenue in this budget.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on this item?
Do we need to mention in the motion the amount it increases it by?
We can. It's just a calculation.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine to keep the motion as it.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back. Is there any additional items?
So you just asked me for the, the new total?
Yes, please.
It is $354,780,494.
$780.
And $494.
Okay.
Does it change the percentage?
Very little.
I will just double-check, but I do not believe so. No, the, the mil rate increase is still at 0.98% after those changes.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to ask for an amendment to our motion that we originally had on the floor, and the amendment would be to consider an act upon proposed revenues and appropriations in the amount of amended number of 354,780,494 for the general fund of the fiscal year from July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item?
On the amendment? No.
Well, this is the amended-
And then we go-
Original motion.
Okay.
I'm, I'm amending our original motion with a different number.
Further?
No further discussion on the amended-
Right, just to make sure we have it right. We don't need to dis-
354,780,494.
Okay, so we're just, now it's the final vote. Got it?
Correct.
Okay. I have no further.
Any additional?
I'm good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Wow. Look at us. 0.98.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, thank you. Motion, motion to adjourn?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.